Could you please all stand for the pledge? I'd just like to point out the exits, to the back corners and to the rear. The first order of business is to swear in the new officers, the new trustees for the board. I'm going to speak with Louis Arginio. I also want to point out that Jim Kriegen could not be here tonight, but he was previously sworn in. And John Edelin cannot be here either, and he will be sworn in before the next meeting.
Louis, please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Member Board of Education.
Of Member Board of Education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I swear in this superintendent's schools. Did you say after me? I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Superintendent the Schools.
Of Superintendent the Schools.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to take nominations from the Office of the President of the Board of Education.
I'd like to nominate Nancy.
A nomination on the floor.
I'll second.
Nancy Bryan. I have a second. Teresa. Any other nominations? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Congratulations. At this point, I'd like to take nominations from the floor for the Office of the Vice President of the Board of Education.
I'd like to nominate Louis Arginio.
Okay. I have a motion for Louis Arginio for the Vice President. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second? Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this point, I turn it over to Nancy, President of the Board of Education.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome to our meeting. I would like to, at this point, turn it over to our Superintendent, Mr. Dade.
Good evening, everyone. So I'll keep my remarks brief, since we are in summer mode. But just wanted to say how appreciative I am to be here in Cornwall with our amazing community, our teachers and staff, and most importantly, our rock star students. It's amazing what a difference a year makes. This time last year, we were in the cafeteria because things were still up in the air with regards to COVID restrictions. Everyone was in masks. We were thinking through what was to come from New York State Education Department. And then we fast forward, and we just had probably the largest gathering of Cornwall residents prior to the Fourth of July celebration was our great high school graduation, where we got to really celebrate our students. And got to make an announcement today that, based on updates from the New York State Department of Health and the CDC, that we can go masks as optional in all of our summer programs, our summer school, and all of our buildings. So it's great news for us. It shows what we continue to do to keep our community safe with our protocols in place and continuing to move forward in getting back and closer to normal. The next update from me will be, once we receive what the reopening guidelines are for New York State from New York State Education Department. We're hoping that it's not going to be 117 pages to digest again. But once we have that, we'll alert the community and send it out. Later in the meeting, it's not on your agenda, but Harvey and I will be providing a federal funds update, just a brief presentation, just so that our community and our board can know exactly where we've landed with regards to feedback from our staff and our families, and what we're hoping will get approved by the state moving forward. So thank you all again for having me as your Superintendent, and I'm looking forward to a true first year ahead.
Thank you, Terry. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak at this time? Please come down, state your name, and remember that you have three minutes.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Raphael Ortiz, Cornwall. Superintendent Dade, I just want to congratulate you again, and we're very excited about you and about your service, and we're very thankful for you. Reorganization meetings are always, are, bring a new spirit, a fresh beginning, an opportunity to look at what we can do to improve. And may I suggest to you, as a concerned neighbor, that this provides an opportunity, I know it's on the agenda tonight, to review committee, committees, and this is an opportunity to invite the community to participate and to collaborate in the discussion of how we can help you advance our children and our community. Open it up. Put a calendar together. Invite folks to collaborate. We're really hungry to be part of the solutions and not part of the problem. I think that it's sad always when elections come around, and I think it's time to set aside the polarities of division and to come together as good neighbors to see how we can all help. Thank you.
Thank you, Raphael. Anyone else? Okay. We're going to move on to recommended actions. This is just to let the folks in the audience know, this is a lot of procedural things that we do undertake every year for our reorg meeting. So we have, we're going to take number one, which is appointment of officers, and number two, other recommended appointments. And we're going to take them as one document. Can I have a motion, please?
Sumo.
And a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. Designations for the 2021-2022 school year. I take that as per document. Do I have a motion? And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Number four, authorizations for the 2021-2022 school year. And we'll take that as per document. Do I have a motion? And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you. Number five, other appointments. We'll take that as per document. Do I have a motion? And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Okay. Consent agenda. Use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Is there anyone? We have items two through 16 on the consent agenda for this evening. Is there anyone on the board that wishes to pull out an item and discuss it separately?
I'd like to pull out nine.
Number nine?
Number nine, 14 and 15.
Nine, 14, and 15, Nina?
Yes.
Okay. 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 So we are going to, the consent agenda items are items two through eight, 10 through 13, and 16. Did I do that right? Okay. Do I have a motion? And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right. Onto item number nine.
Sorry. Can I, can I correct myself? It was 12. Not nine. Well, you're already. It's my comment, my comment is a general one on these. I would just like to see when we're looking at awarding contracts or whatever, if we could add a reference in terms of when we last did an RFP on some of these retentions, because it's detail that comes up quite a bit, and I'd like to see it in the resolutions. So that would cover the 12, 14, and 15.
Okay. Number nine? We'll take that as per document. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Okay. Number 14?
And 15.
Well, you want to take that as, we'll take that as one document. 14 and 15 as per one document. Do I have a motion?
Sumo.
And a second? Discussion?
So do we know, like, in terms of, like, the drainage award or some of these other awards, like, did we go out with an RFP? Or how did we come to awarding that?
I can speak to that.
Yeah, Harvey, please.
Sure. So specific to the middle school drainage work, this has to do with a, the source of funds that we got from the late Senator Larkin. He got us a grant years back, and it's only finally coming through. And what it has to do with is, if you're familiar with the football field area, from Lee Road coming down the hill, when we get a bad rain, that whole area floods out. If it's bad enough, it even floods out onto some adjacent neighbor's yards, and it just, it doesn't make for a good morning. So we finally got the funding, and we went out to bid for contractors to get, to do this work, and we, this is the low bidder.
Okay.
So that's the situation with that one. And the other one was 15?
Yes.
15? That has to do, we went out for an RFP, I believe it was 2018. And what this has to do with is Medicaid billing. It's a very sophisticated process where we have to submit to the state to get reimbursed for those services that our special education students receive that we are entitled to get money back. So this firm actually processes all that paperwork on our behalf.
In 2015, so we're talking at this point, six years ago, how often?
No, I think it was 2018.
2018?
Yes.
Okay. So how often do we do an RFP on that? Is there a specific period?
Not necessarily. They're still within the renewal period. But once any RFP, you know, in terms of the options for the board to renew, are no longer existing, we do go out for an RFP. I believe we have one more year left on this if we wanted to exercise our option.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. New business. And we're going to turn it over to Terry and Harvey for the federal funds update.
All right. So I wanted to provide an update for our community and our board on where we stand after sending out surveys to both our staff and our families, asking, we have this amount of money. What do you believe are the most impactful supports that should be in place for our students post-pandemic? So remember, the purpose of this federal funding is to provide support for school districts to reopen schools safely, maximize in-person instructional time, and address the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on students, educators, and families. So ARP stands for American Rescue Plan and CRSA, Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. I reminded the board last time that the timing of the window of this funding, and as the distinct purpose that you see up here, we really should have received this funding as we were entering the pandemic. Look at the wording of maximize in-person instructional time, reopen schools safely. So it's clear that the feds and the state are playing catch-up, but we're going to do the best we can now as we move forward with our district and community. The actual allocation, as a reminder, approximately 2.2 million in the American Rescue Plan, and then CRSA, approximately 2.9, for a total allocation of 5.1. So like I said, and the community did see these surveys, we surveyed the staff first. And I wanted to just read, since the community didn't get to see kind of the details of that survey, we asked an open-ended survey, and some excerpts that we explained to the staff are as follows. We like your feedback. What are the most important academic, social, emotional, and/or mental health supports that our schools and district can provide to students most impacted by the pandemic? Based on your, please be specific and creative. Based on your feedback, we will design a more streamlined survey for our community that will include your input. We are leaving this survey as an open response so that we can really gain your thoughtful feedback. So that was specifically what we asked the staff. We didn't want to come up with a menu of options without going to the very folks who were with our students in the classroom throughout the entire pandemic. Based on those staff responses, we developed a community survey that you all did get to see, that did have drop-down items to select from, asking the same question. For your child, what are the supports that are going to be necessary so that he or she can be successful next year? So these are the top seven responses from our parents. The number one response should give everyone goosebumps and make you feel really good. The number one response was bring back the many district-wide and school-wide events that make Cornwall so unique. So our parents are really craving getting back to normal. As much as we can, let's get back to all of the events, before school, after school, weekends, that make this community so special and unique. Number two, get back to hands-on team exploration with STEAM. When I was researching this district, science and technology was a very high priority. COVID hit, so we got away from a lot of those initiatives, so we want to get back to that. Number three, additional staffing to maintain small group instruction within classrooms. So this, from an educator's standpoint, is, there's only a limited amount of time that you have your students in class. You would love to provide as much focused support for students, but you just don't have the time that you would like to spend with all of your students. With a class of 23, 24 little bodies, it's hard to get to everyone. So by providing additional staffing, you may be able to divide into those smaller groups more appropriately. Number four, K through 12 tutoring options. That's self-explanatory. Number five, academic clubs, both remedial and enrichment-based. Number six, social skills groups. And number seven, mindfulness and mental health programs. So this is right from our parents. All we did was looked at the percentage of responses, and these are the top seven. So remember these responses as we get to what we've developed as our spending plan. So the components of the spending plan are as follows. One, a full-time social worker added at the elementary level. Currently, we have one at CES, one for Willow, and one for Cornwall and Hudson. As you know, you could put Cornwall and Hudson and Willow together and still not equal the size of CES. So this would provide much-needed support at Cornwall Elementary School, where they're not able to get as much accomplished as they do at COH and Willow with their social work staffing. Second one is a full-time social worker to be divided between middle school and high school. Again, thinking of those mental health supports, providing additional supports across five through 12 to get into classrooms, push in, pull out small groups, and the like, to really get at the social, emotional supports that our students might be needing after this pandemic. The third one is a full-time social, emotional learning staff for district-wide. We really want to beef up what we do as a district for social, emotional learning and supports, both for our educators, for our students, and our parents. This staffing would be designated to work with Joe Debold to really develop a district-wide SEL program that we can all be proud of. I'm going to stop right there because I didn't explain the other columns, so you'll see the grade levels that are impacted in column two. Approximate duration, remember this funding expands over numerous years, so the funding isn't just for next year. It can go into 22 and 23 for our spending. So you can see approximate duration of those supports. For the first few, you'll see a year and a half. That's not by, by chance. With the timing of this funding, it's going to be really difficult to get a lot of these up and running right away for the start of the school year. So let's get the school year started. We're going to continue to get feedback from our staff now that we start to put some meat to what our parents are looking for, to make sure that our staff sees how this can benefit their instruction and support, make tweaks as we need. And then you can see the approximate costs in the last column. So the fourth one are a bunch of FTE teaching assistants at the elementary school and middle school level. Remember, one of the top supports asked for by our staff and our parents were additional staffing to increase small group instruction in the classroom. Something that is very, very popular across the country is if you have space, you add additional staffing by way of teachers. As you know, we don't have a bunch of extra classrooms in the district. We lived this when we were thinking of social distancing and the like. So we really have to think of the existing classroom space and supports that can be pushed into existing classrooms. We can't add five classroom teachers at CES, or Willow, or COH, or wherever you. We don't have that classroom space. So these teaching assistants would push into the classroom and work with our teachers based on lesson plans that are designed by our, by our teachers to really provide targeted small group instruction for our students to fill in some gaps. Next one is summer school programs. As you know, we expanded to the fifth through eighth grade level, so that's underway as we speak. Remember, a lot of this funding, should it be approved, can be retro. So even though we're already up and going, a lot of some of these supports can supplement what we're doing right now. So now our summer programs can be five through 12 for two years, this summer and next summer. Next is after-school tutorial program for middle school and high school, which would include transportation. Then before and after-school enrichment clubs at the elementary school. We wouldn't be able to do transportation there because of kind of where we are with our bus schedule and the like. And then last is something that Harvey's going to expand upon a bit more. Our currently-employed AIS teachers, shifting that funding to this federal funding, which would allow us more flexibility in some other areas. So Harvey's going to speak to that. So Harvey's going to speak to that.
So a lot of you may recall that when the funding came out, there was eligible use of this money for certain capital projects, capital work, such as heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. And we talked about that. We talked about the need. We certainly have needs in almost all of our buildings. So the question is, you know, why do we not see it up here? And the reason for that is because what we're going to do is we're going to take a very strategic approach. Right there, you can see that the nine FTE AIS teachers come to about $1.3 million. We have a choice. The first choice is, do we spend it here, or do we just put it directly to the HVAC? If we put it directly to the HVAC, this is federal money. We don't get any aid on it. Okay? So the most that we could do in terms of work would be 1.3 million. Okay? So that's one bucket, 1.3. The strategic approach that we're going to take is as follows. These AIS teachers are currently budgeted for, in our budget, for '21, '22. They're in there. What we're going to do is, and this is perfectly permissible, we're going to supplant those salaries and pay them through the federal grant. Okay? What that's going to do is that's going to create a surplus in the general fund of 1.3 million. What do we do with that 1.3? We're going to put that into the capital reserve. Now, when we put that 1.3 into the capital reserve, that actually allows us to get three times that amount in federal, I'm sorry, in state building aid. So instead of 1.3 dollars' worth of work, we're going to be able to get almost $5 million of work at no cost to the taxpayers. So this 1.3, what it's really doing is it's paying for the local share, which is about 25%, and the government, state government, picks up three-quarters of that. So all totaled, we're going to be able to do about $5 million instead of 1.3. Okay? Totally permissible. It's, a lot of districts are going this route. It's just a way of strategically using this money more effectively. Any questions on that? I know it gets a little complicated, but...
First of all, I love plans that start, "Don't worry, this is permissible." Help me, help me understand, I know that there, we go through this probably every time there's a, we talk about aid. We would get that $5 million upfront, or is that $5 million, the 75% would be paid back over time? Help me understand that.
Sure. Yeah. So it's paid back over time, but remember, you bond the project, so you're paying it over time. So the aid matches what you're paying out.
Got it. So you're, you're paying what you have to upfront out of the funds that we have available, the 1.3 or whatever.
Correct.
And then as it's necessary, we're receiving it.
Correct.
Before it's going out.
Essentially, as we do each budget moving forward, we're going to have increased debt service. We're also going to have increased building aid.
Got it.
So it takes care of each other.
Okay.
All right. I think the low-hanging fruit here is, what's the sustainability of that last column?
Which one?
Beyond 1.5 years, two-year, year three, four. So this is, this is, this is to take this out, projected, you know, two years for some in that column, a year and a half for the others. Right?
Mm-hmm.
So you, this is, this is allocating that federal money into our district, and these are teachers in full-time positions we're filling. What's that sustainability look on the back end where that, you know, money runs out, runs its course?
Right now, we're preparing the district for this is not sustainable. That is not a doom and gloom. That is a decision point that our community and our board will have to make every, every single year. So this isn't a sustainability plan. This is, what do we do to mitigate the impact of this pandemic real-time? So this year and next year. But Louis is asking a very good question. This is not something that we would now go at the end of, when we get to you for a budget next year, you will not see these positions included in necessarily. Something that we do, I do want to put into public space right now. If you see a dramatic return on investment of any of these items, it's a no-brainer. You're going to say, based on the feedback that we're receiving from teachers, staff, parents, X, Y, or Z, we cannot let this go as a community. There's other things that you've done with that where a position gets added and you never go back. So there's some of that potential here, but it'll be a decision point that we'll have to make each and every, every budget cycle.
Terry?
Yes.
First of all, it's a great way to test these programs at the, someone else's expense because I have to believe if you see huge improvements in some of these areas with student growth, social, emotional, but also educational, that parents are going to say, wait a minute, don't, let's not take this away. One thing I notice here that I see where we have K through 12, which is AIS, okay, and social, emotional learning K through 12, but I think there seems to be that 2 through 5 gap where those children need support also. I'm not certain why they're not, they're not getting, not the summer school, but certainly being offered without busing after-school tutorials and things. I think when you look at two, grades two through five, they've missed out a huge amount, and I'm not sure why we're not touching on that here.
So absolutely great question, and something that we tossed around quite a bit. One of the things that educators will tell you is that if you're going to provide supports for your neediest students, you have to have a guarantee. The guarantee for us is why we're providing those teaching assistants during the day because that's our guarantee. Those babies get off of our buses and walk into our schools, and then we have them until 3:30. So the guarantee for educators is we do all that we can from 8:30 till 3:30. They're hours. Once you start relying on before-school and after-school, I can tell you as a principal, some of the babies that I needed there the most weren't coming. So then I cannot tell the board that we provided to our neediest students extra reading support, math support, if we're relying on, can you get them to school at 7:30 rather than 8:30? Or can you commit to after-school, or is soccer more important for the students? So Teresa's asking something that I think we as educators battle year after year after year. Saturday school, summer school, before and after-school, there's no guarantee. You have to have that parent commitment and availability to be there. So that's why we put the supports in that sweet spot.
So you're looking at that 30, 30 teachers from levels one through six.
They would push into the classroom.
Pushing in, pushing in, okay.
I think one of the things too, on the elementary school level, when you're in the middle school and the high school, you're with one teacher for just a little while, and then you move on. Whereas in elementary school, you're with your same teacher, you know, until you get to third grade or fourth grade where you switch between the two. But they, to have those TAs in there and really helping break into groups and things with those kids all day long, with the exception of special time or what have you, or lunch, those teachers have such a focus on those specific kids. So I think that's, like, the TAs is a great thing, but the kids, again, aren't moving, you know, from classroom to classroom. So I think that's...
Yeah. Terry, could we talk a little bit more about the summer school program? So I guess they're just done for 5 through 12, but I'm curious in terms of, are those programs just remedial for students that were cited as needing that help? And where did our numbers go this year on that after COVID? Because, you know, I think that sort of bridging at this point where we can do more in person is important, and I'd just be curious how we're benchmarking that, or if a parent can opt for a kid to, to go into a summer school program if they feel they need additional help, or how is all of that working?
So for this year, we made a few decision points. One was to, we have our traditional high school summer program that is much-needed. It gets kids across the finish line for graduation, gets them to pass from one level to the next. So that 9 through 12 stayed pretty much the same. Where we expanded was at 5 through 8, we went to the middle school principal and her staff to look at grades and progress, what kids really struggled in the pandemic last year and are just not, not cutting it. So we sent out invites to those students. We decided, when I say we, we discussed it a bit, we looked at the staff responses. Much more of the staff responses were in the middle school and high school for summer school than they were in elementary. Parents were not asking for summer school at the elementary level, and I felt that our kids need to be kids this summer. Go have fun. We can take care of those gaps when they come back in. So this year was very focused on remedial and catching kids up. Next year, it could look very different. So we left it as summer school programs. It could, it could expand. It could be more enrichment opportunities. One of the things that you'll see if you Google "summer school program struggle," just Google that, the top articles that will pop up are over-promising and under-delivering. So people are getting this funding and saying, we're going to have an extravaganza of summer offerings, and guess what? Teachers don't want to work this summer. They are tired. They had a really, really tough year, so we're not getting the number of staffing all across New York State that we would in a typical year. So a lot of summer programs had to cut back on what those offerings are. So we didn't have a widespread of offerings this summer, one because of the timing of these funds. Once we figured out what we wanted to do, we had to send out postings for these summer programs and then move forward from there. By way of benchmark, what we really hope our community surrounds around is that when we look at our data at the end of this upcoming school year, are we back to our pre-COVID rates? That's going to be the tell-all. So when you hear learning loss and all the gaps, X, Y, or Z, I am uber-confident that we will be pre-COVID rates by the end of next year with all of these supports in place. That's the benchmarking I'm looking for. Our kids were doing amazing. Our staff were amazing pre-COVID. They continue to do so and be just that. So looking at graduation rate, achievement on 3 through 8, assessments, and other benchmarks will be what we bring to you and the community at the end of next year.
Okay. And in terms of the benchmarking and, you know, other monies beyond, you know, obviously the emotional learning and social learning is so important, but in some of the remedial that we're doing here, are we going to have a benchmark for ourselves to see if potentially we can get ahead of our pre-COVID levels?
So the benchmarking that we use, I mean, so there'll be assessments that we use each and every year, and we can compare what our students are doing next year to pre-COVID rates. So, I mean, our goal is always continuous improvement and doing even better. That said, there is going to be an asterisk, to be fair to our educators and everyone. This is not a typical 19, 20, 21, 21, 22. It's just not. So we're really looking at, how do we get back to pre-COVID? But we do have star assessments and other assessments that the board has typically looked at. Megan typically gives that presentation in December, January, so she can provide kind of where we are at that point. Are we above? Are we right one level, or are we a bit below?
Okay. Because I'd like to see, you know, where we're doing against our prior success, but also where we're doing against other, other schools and nationally.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I just wanted to circle back real quick to Louis's question about sustainability. Just please understand that the last item there, the AIS teachers, they are sustainable, meaning they will continue past that one year. They're already in the budget, and they will continue to, as well as the ninth through 12th grade summer school program. So I just wanted to make sure that, that's known.
Terry, two questions. One to kind of piggyback on what we're talking about, about the, you know, benchmarking. A lot of these are allocated for two years. If at the end of the year, we realize, for instance, the, we've caught up, we've closed certain gaps, do we have the freedom to then move that funding, divert that funding to somewhere else where there might be a gap? I just, part of my concern is that, you know, we'll, we'll lock ourselves in, and we may end up creating a sort of academic dependency that will create greater problems when we bring this, you know, pull this away. But if we're able to be targeted next year so that we're only putting the resources to where there are actual existing gaps, that would, you know, potentially mitigate that problem.
Yeah, 100%. Harvey and I have been on countless webinars and talking with other business officials and superintendents. That's a common ask that we haven't had answered yet, but I can't see, based on other applications that Megan and Harvey do all the time, there's always that opportunity to addend. So how do we kind of amend what we've put into place, provide data to support why we're amending it, and then move forward? So I can't see that not happening. It's just smart use of funds. But right now, we're operating under the parameters that they gave us, but I agree. If we see that a gap is closed, or something's just not working the way we thought it would, it's just not as feasible as we thought for the push-in or X, Y, or Z, that we should be able to amend at that point as well.
That's great. And then from a curriculum standpoint, you know, I'm just thinking of a third-grade teacher, for instance, who now has a teaching assistant where they didn't have one before. Where, will, will there be special, you know, instructions on how the teaching assistant will be used? Again, going back to that idea of not creating these academic dependencies where the extra person in the room is only responsible for addressing those with higher need, and therefore not, you know, not creating this expectation, even among students, that they will have essentially two teachers for two years, and then in the third year, oh, it's back to one.
Yeah. So this is going to take collaboration with our teachers for sure, because you don't just add staffing without having those conversations that Brendan's talking about. There's a few different models that we have with push-in, English language learning support, push-in with special education support. The models look very different. So depending on the skill set of these teaching assistants, we might have a rock star, reading instructor. Then we would give him or her, yep, you can, you are responsible for these six kiddos, make sure that they're progressing. We may have someone else who's better with general, just, I'm just a good educator. When you have two bodies in the classroom, that person might work with your higher-achieving student set. I can work on project-based learning while the actual classroom teacher works with the most struggling students. So there's so many different ways that you can approach additional support. Every single classroom teacher's going to have a different style as well, so we would work with teachers, the principals, and the like to figure out what's going to be the biggest bang for our buck with this additional staffing, and then how we're going to progress monitor whether we're actually seeing the gains that we hope for.
Over the past 25, 27 years, different, at different times in budgets and different periods in education, the state has thrown money at school districts, lots and lots of money at different times, and then, of course, pulled it all back at other times. So it will certainly not be the first time that, like in the case, I know in the late 90s, early 2000s, they had push-in assistant teachers in almost every classroom. They had not just special ed where you had, you know, 1211 or 15, you know, 151 or something, but they decided smaller classrooms. And again, with space, they pushed, and they had funding. And then a few years later, they said, okay, now the district, you've got to pick up this tab. And the same thing happened, because in most cases, in some cases, they did keep certain, they saw these results and they were getting their money. But once they started tightening the belt again, we had to let people go. And that's just the nature of the beast. It's what the state gives you. I don't think it changes from year to year that the student gets dependent. I think the teacher needs to keep in mind, more than the student, in all fairness, that this is an aid that's here, but may not always be here. But as far as the student, they move on to another grade. And as far as an aid in a classroom, no matter what their strengths, I don't think an aid can ever just determine that they're going to only focus in on X amount of students because in a public school, if a child puts their hand out and somebody's free, they're going to go over and help that, that student, even if they're not one of those numbers. But I don't see, it's sad to think that that's, I mean, but to me, it's like, take the money and run because they'll just take it back. And if we can get a couple of years of this, and see what happens in a couple of years. So, thank you.
Any other questions? So just want to remind that our So just want to remind that our goal was to take the staff responses and the parent responses that you see here. Again, open-ended responses from the staff. We took those responses and started to fill in. Oh, we had quite a few teachers say remedial and enrichment clubs would be important for our kiddos, a return back to normal and the like. And we think that we've accomplished that by taking those parent responses that you see here and developing this plan. This is absolutely meeting what our parents and staff asked for. So the next step, it gets tricky, and I'm going to ask you all to be patient and trust Harvey and I, that submission of one part of the plan is on July 15. So I think it's the CRRSA. That's the portal that's open. ARP, there's no portal there. We know our total allocation. Harvey's going to work his magic to divvy up the funds between the two. But we will be submitting the CRRSA portion on July 15. All of this is subject to state approval. So we'll come back to the board and the community if there's any deviation or they asked us to change anything. But that's our, those are our next steps. Any general questions?
Terry, this will be put up on board docs for everyone to see.
Yes. So we'll put the presentation up on board docs. And we'll put it on our website, which is another part of the approval process is that we, one, wanted to present it, but also put it up on our website for the public.
And just kind of a general question, I may have missed it. How much dollar-figure total was all of that? Was that the 5.1 altogether, or is there? It was? Okay.
I don't want to appear greedy. Which is also an interesting way to start a sentence.
You're fine with being greedy. You don't want to appear greedy.
But I don't know what our normal summer school cost is, but there's roughly 400,000 there. Is there any ability to do the sort of thing that we've done with the AIS teachers with whatever portion that we had previously budgeted for summer school?
And that's exactly what we're doing. The reason I didn't really speak toward it is the current and the historical high school summer school program, it only costs us about $50,000 a year. So, you know, yeah, we'll get some bang out of it, but it's not like the 1.2 million.
It's not a big number. All right. I just thought there might be some low-hanging fruit there.
Right.
All right. Thank you, Nancy.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is discussion of Board of Ed committees. This is not where we're going to make any decisions as to who wants to be on what committee tonight. We're just going to have a general discussion on it. I do want to mention that there are district-wide committees and there's Board of Ed committees. District-wide committees do include a total cross-section of people from the community, staff, Board of Ed members, administration. It's a very, very interesting cross-section of people and very, very good cross-section of ideas and input. So those are district-wide committees. The board committees are open to the public. They always have been. When there's a committee meeting, it is posted on the website. The location is posted. Obviously, this past year, many committees met through Zoom and the Zoom link was there. The visitation committee would be the only one that would not have public participating in that. That would be board members going in and visiting schools and classrooms. Health and safety is a district-wide committee. We have pulled safety off of here. There was a single, there was a safety committee that really didn't need to be there because we're required to have a district-wide health and safety committee. And so on here, and just, the safety committee never met this year, but health and safety met. So the safety committee was, I think, a misunderstanding from a couple of years ago. So health and safety has met a number of times this year. And Teresa has been the board participant on that for us. So we have the audit committee, the policy committee, facilities committee, SBA outreach communications, I think we can probably, didn't we decide to just call it communications? Yeah. So that's just communications committee. Visitation committee, new member handbook committee, and the scholarship committee. And the scholarship committee is a brand-new committee that was just formed in the last couple of months. So if anybody has any questions about any committee, what we are suggesting is, what we'd like to see is that, and I'll shoot the board an email, is that you think about what committees you'd like to be a part of and let me know your top two and probably then what your third choice would be. We'd like to see perhaps each board member on two committees and not have you on every committee because we're concerned about some of you maybe trying to do too much. And so that's just kind of where we're at with that. But anybody want to have any discussion on any committee right now or ask any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment on the visitation committee. We actually have more than five school buildings, if you consider BOSI's as sixth building. And I am proposing that the visitation committee set aside a day to go out to BOSI's. We have a lot of our kids out there.
Oh, very good idea, yeah.
And I think it would be appropriate for that committee to go visit. Plus, when that is decided what day it is, I would suggest anybody on the board go also.
I'm very interested in going.
I have already talked to the BOSI's board about that, and they're in full agreement. So.
Yeah. The programs out there are amazing. I was out there a number of years ago with a teachers group. It was, back then, it was wonderful, amazing what they offer our students in this county. And I know that they have certainly upscaled and they're very current with what they're training our kids. And it would definitely be good for anybody to go to. So thank you, Larry. That's something that we could, we'll add on to that, BOSI's also.
Thank you.
Nancy, I can add that the scholarship committee, while it was recently formed, it's going to meet throughout the summer to hone in the scholarship. Certainly, if, you know, everybody expressed their interest and, you know, if somebody's got a jump or crossover, you know, we'll figure it out. But we are going to meet, the preceding, you know, the establishments are going to meet and push that through.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Tracy.
You're good. I don't have a husband to interrupt anymore. I have to go outside of my home. There's nobody there to, you know, nag. Sorry about that. Okay. I have one. Doesn't work. Actually, I just wanted to check on the procedure because this is my second year now. And the first one, I just kind of sat back and took, was handed out. The procedure we have, just correct me if I'm wrong, or if this is how you move forward with it. I send you two committees and then a third, just as like an alternative, that basically the ones in order of what I really would want. And then you work from there. And that's great. Now, as far as chairpeople, in my past history with chairpersons, that was always determined by the president and vice president in unison. Is that how it works? Because I tell you the truth, I wasn't really, I wasn't involved in that last year.
It's not how it has worked in the past, but we certainly, if the board has a consensus and would like us to, Louis and myself, to do that, we certainly could do that moving forward. There's, this board, from what I have learned, has done things a little uniquely and not necessarily the way other boards have done things. And so we can change things a little bit because we don't have to do business the way it's always been done, or we can keep doing it because it works, you know.
I'm not implying any.
Yeah, no, I know you're not.
Historically, I've found that, I think it just works out better. I don't, by the way, just to make everything clear, I don't want to be a chairperson of anything. So don't think I've got any bone to talk in this fight here. I'm just saying, as far as having, you know, you know your board members. And honestly, probably, you've been working with all the people the longest. And maybe between you and Louis, it might work out better if you determine, you know, how that works. Just a thought.
We can see what the board wants.
What are your thoughts of when you do email your ones, twos, and threes, maybe you have an asterisk saying, "I wouldn't mind chairing this committee"?
Yes, you guys can do that as well.
Yeah, you know, because there's always at least five people vying for that position.
Exactly.
You'll only have four.
So do any of you have any questions about the committees? And then, just again, I mean, anytime a committee is meeting, it will be posted on the website. And so the community can certainly look to that, and they are open to the public. So, and you don't have to belong on a committee to attend a committee meeting and be an observer at a committee meeting. So, okay. So, yeah, look for my email, and we'll just, you know, move along from then. And then we'll make a decision coming up in the future. Brendan?
Yeah, just to clarify the point from before about members of the community being members of committees. So I understand what you're saying.
We do have, we do have members of the community that are part of a committee. But all committee meetings are open to the public.
Right.
And so any person from the community is welcome to sit in on a meeting as an observer, just like here. And that's, you know, that's acceptable also.
And the process, if there was a community member who wanted to be part of a permissible committee, it would be what? I mean, do we have that outlined, or is that kind of? Email Nancy?
Yeah, email me. So, you know, we do, we have, Larry, I use facilities as an example. I think we have three, four community members.
The facility committee actually has five, I think it's five.
Five community members, yeah.
Community members that are part of the committee.
Audit committee can have a community member as a committee member. That person has to be sworn in as a member of the audit committee. That's the only one where that has to happen. And there's just, just kind of, just to let you guys know that this is what we do. Communications committee, absolutely, we've always had community members. Again, this past year, everything was a little different. But hopefully, we will be conducting business as usual this year. So.
So I guess just to go from Brendan's question, to the extent that, you know, I don't know if people in the community know, but, you know, the board meetings are online, so they can see now. If we get a lot of interest in a particular committee, where we can actually add members of the public, is, do we just take everybody that's interested, or what's the protocol?
That would be up to the committee to decide. I mean, like I said, facilities has five. You know, I would say you need a good workable number, and the committee can make that decision. And you certainly, you know, in the past, we've used locations like the middle school cafeteria. We'd have to find, have to do, you know, a building request form to meet publicly. So you want to make sure you have an adequate space. And it was acceptable to the building also, and there wasn't something else going on, just like any other group would have to, you know, request a space. And Lynda, I think you can work with us on that, right? She usually helps out with that. So, yeah, that's how that would work.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We have another opportunity for recognition of visitors. Anyone wishing to speak?
Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. Regarding the committees, if I can make the suggestion, if the calendar for each committee could be posted in advance, it would allow the community then to look at their schedules, adjust their schedules, and perhaps volunteer to come in and participate, even as an observer. That would be helpful, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Use the funding. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. And just before we move on to comments, oh, I'm sorry, John, go ahead. Thank you.
John Heinz, a teacher, community member, and a CCTA executive board member. This was a letter that we asked be read at this Board of Education meeting tonight. Dear Board of Ed members, since August last year, the teachers of the CCSD have continually reached out with the intent of being an integral part of the planning process, which includes NICID's reopening plan. However, every plan and survey put out by the district that required collaboration was not collaborative at all but a one-way process of collecting data in the form of answering questions and giving feedback. Teachers did not help build the plan. A partnership between the district administration and the Board of Ed cannot be cultivated if our feedback, experience, and expertise in the field is not valued and considered. We've requested the Board of Ed to come into schools and meet with teachers and see our classrooms, to see firsthand what teaching in a pandemic looked like. What we hear is you can't and won't. We thank you for the more recent positive meetings that have taken place in dealing with APPR, MOAs, and My Learning Plan. However, we have many concerns that very much need to be addressed. The Technology Committee hasn't met since March of 2020. Yet, there's been a technology plan made without our input. For example, Chromebooks are being ordered on our behalf, but the district has been informed and shown firsthand that Chromebooks inhibit our jobs. It doesn't seem fiscally responsible to spend money on technology that doesn't meet our needs and allows us to do our jobs effectively. The Professional Learning Plan Committee hasn't met or developed a plan that ended in June 2021. To our knowledge, there have been no actions taken to hold a mentoring subcommittee meeting to select a new mentoring coordinator. According to Parts 155.4, Procedures and Investigations of Complaints Related to Health and Safety, the District Health and Safety Committee still has not fulfilled its requirement to meet. Most concerning is the most recent survey sent out to the CCSD community. Assuming the goal of the survey was to gather input regarding federal spending plan, why were the teachers left out of the planning process after inquiry was made? Will teachers have a say in providing information as it relates to the top seven categories? As it's perceived right now, the partnership between district administration and the Board of Ed is not collaborative. Perhaps our definition of collaborative is where we differ. What we do know for certain is that we need to find common ground in order to amend this fractured partnership. The perception amongst many teachers in this district is that we're not a team. How can we feel that our health and safety in the workplace is a priority when you don't care about our input? Mrs. Bryant stated in a previous email, "I don't understand why meeting with teachers is an urgent issue via the visitation committee." This speaks volumes as it shows that the Board of Ed sees no value in meeting with the CCTA or that there are any issues. It takes a village to raise a child. The CCTA is a huge part of that village. It takes a district to educate a child. You can't achieve this goal effectively without teachers. Collectively as a team, we can be innovative, effective, and proactively working through issues before they become problems. Without us, there is no team. The CCTA has been absent from this process. Had we been included from the beginning of the planning of the past school year, many issues and problems could have been avoided. It was the teachers that bore the burden of cleaning up poor decisions the district made. There are others examples that show that there's a strain on our relationship. The unprecedented number of grievances filed due to our contract not being followed, as well as health and safety concerns as it relates to temperature checks, took two months into school to execute. Perp charges were filed and submitted due to the district creating positions in which teachers were not appropriately compensated for the work they performed. This area was not resolved until June, eight months later. A notice of claim needed to be filed and submitted to stop a violation of our mentoring program. It took drastic measures to finally come to some sort of resolution. We continue to work under subpar safety plans, unsuitable conditions, and failing equipment. Yet, you don't want to hear our feedback on what has occurred the past year and how it went. You keep thanking your teachers for the outstanding job that we do, and it is outstanding, and for being superheroes, but you don't want to hear at what cost. However, with all this said, we continue to have hope. We hope that you want to work with us as a team to be collaborative and strengthen the partnership, and most important, restructure the current decision-making process that's currently in place. This needs to include all stakeholders throughout the planning process to ensure programs are successfully implemented, that the community is behind the decisions being made, and that being fiscally responsible to finance the programs that are much-needed infrastructure and equipment-wise. Thank you. That was from Brenda Wright, the CCTA president.
Sorry. Thank you. What I did want to mention is that since we began in-person meetings, we stopped taking email comments. So I just wanted to clear that little point up. Okay, comments from the board. Larry, we'll start with you.
I want to, Harvey's idea of how to creatively use the federal funds comes at a perfect time because we're finalizing the five-year plan and the building condition survey, which will be brought to the board shortly. So that the planning piece is in place. There was a facilities committee meeting that discussed that. So it's a perfect storm at this point. Everything's lining up, and I think I want to thank Harvey for that. And then I'm looking forward to a new year. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much. I mean, congratulations to Nancy and Louis for another. I mean, congratulations to Nancy and Louis for another year suckers. The, I really, really enjoyed the federal fund update. It's, it's so nice to know, okay, the state's giving us money, that's great. What are we going to do with it? You, you, the three of you obviously put a lot of work into this to figure out not only how to create a survey based on, you know, okay, teachers, what do you want? Tell us the things that are most important to you, be creative. Now, from that, we're going to create a survey that will then go to the parents and the families for them to then choose from the options that have been created. That takes a lot of organization and a lot of, you know, sitting in, in a room and saying, okay, what are we going to do? How are we going to do this? I appreciate all the work that obviously went into this and the creativity that was used, you know? Okay, so we can't hire a bunch of teachers, we don't have the space, ooh, let's do T A's, that can come in. You know, that's, that's great thinking, that's a good way to do it, and also still cover all the different levels of the education based on, you know, the kids' ages and their needs and how their structure is of their day, which I think is fantastic. That's pretty much all I had to say, so thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. I'd also like to congratulate Nancy and Louis. I don't know if congratulations is exactly how you would phrase it, but that's what I love. No, you, you've both done a, a great job these last two years that I've been on the Board, and I think that we, we appreciate your stewardship. To both the public speakers and commentators that came up, thank you for expressing your ideas and concerns. I think, you know, it is a new year, and there's, that's just another opportunity to either get it right or get it better, and, and having that, that input from the community is, is valuable. And yeah, great, Harvey, I, just to commend you on the, the thinking. I, I, when I first got involved in school-related discussions, it was through the bonds. And the thing we always heard was, you know, think creatively, you know? How do we, you know, the town needs to buy the football field and sell it to the school for a dollar, you know, like stuff like this. But this is exactly, I think, that kind of idea, in getting the absolute best, most out of our, the situation that, that we're in. So, I commend you and the rest of the, the administration on, on a really great plan, and excited to see it implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. First of all, I have to mention the graduation. It, it's only a few weeks ago, and yet, it was, it was really a wonderful late afternoon, early evening. And it was, I think it was especially poignant, because there were very few masks, and the masks that were being worn were being worn by people that personally felt the need to, which was great, for whatever reason. The students were wonderful. There was just a whole amazing atmosphere, and it was very personal. I've been, I've probably been to about 25 graduations, including my own children, and they've been much, much bigger, and I just enjoyed this whole personal feeling. And I think all of us were, I, we all were laughing and enjoying ourselves. It wasn't just sitting there as a bunch of stuffy Board members that nobody, including the public, wants to see. So, that was the first thing. It's a lot of quick thinking to put these numbers together and where they should go, because basically, you get this from the state, and they, they give you timing and specific rules. They give you the money after the fact. You're supposed to be creative, and at the same time, you, you know, you, you don't know when they're going to pull the string back and the rope back and take it back. Anything that works directly with, and hands-on with children and, and teachers and, and staff, all staff, is, is so important, because we've, we've already seen that Zooms can only go so far, you know? So, getting the kids back in school, I'm, I'm very hopeful, and I'm, I'm really hopeful. My daughter's a teacher, and I know the excitement that everyone has going into this new year. So, I thank you for being, I guess, creative's been thrown around. I, I look at it more as being very inventive. Not, I wouldn't go so far as tedious, because we all know that it's legal, perfectly legal and allowed, but I like the way you think. So, thank you very much, Harvey. That's it.
So, Harvey, I think you've probably got a future in a hedge fund. The ability to, to, to find a way to leverage, you know, those funds, that was brilliant. And I think, you know, we all know that there are a lot of things we need to do in the district, and being able to, to find money and, and create, you know, multiples of that is, is, is excellent. So, thank you very much, and thank you for all the, the surveys that went out and the planning that went into putting together the plan, and I hope we get the, the approvals that we need from the state to move forward with it. I guess, you know, the, the big thing is, you know, it's, it's a year and a half or two years on some of those things, so, you know, our, our execution on everything is, is, is going to be key in that. So, thank you to everyone who's contributing to that. I'd like to say congratulations to the Board members who have been sworn in or will be sworn in for a new term, and congratulations to Louis and Nancy on, on your new, or your continuing officer roles. And thank you to the public. I think, you know, what we sit here and do, it's, it's key to understand how that is viewed and what the public wants. I think we've been doing a lot more surveys recently, and that has been, you know, I think, helpful in terms of giving people a voice and us seeing where the consensus of the general public is. So, you know, I think we, we need to continue doing that. And, you know, on the, the committees, I think, to the extent people want to be involved, we need to get the dates out there. But, you know, the, the more involvement and the more people that want to get their thoughts and their ideas into the mix, I think the better. It's not, you know, it's not held captive within this group up here. And to Teresa's point, I mean, graduation was absolutely heartwarming. It was, it was a real, it was a real reward after such a difficult year for everybody to see the graduating class and their families and, and the Board and so many of the, the members of the, the staff getting together and just celebrating in a way that we hadn't been able to for so long. So, you know, hopefully, we're on a upward trajectory, and that will be where we're seeing things next year, too. Thank you.
I know on those committees, Larry, I think it's a great idea about the, of the B O C's leg of it for the Visitation Committee. I know personally, I love that committee. I was, I've been on it since I've been here on the Boards, and it really, it really rejuvenates you to go in and see the, you know, the kids and the light bulbs and all the stuff, or, or Christian Burns, that's cool, too. I mean, just, it's, 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 it's the live wire, you know? It's, it's, it's great. I think if, if you guys haven't experienced it and you have the opportunity to, you should, you should definitely experience it. It's just fantastic to see that whole thing in action. It's, it's wonderful. I'd like to thank everybody for, A, the nomination, and B, the vote of confidence for being the Vice President again. I very much appreciate it. I will continue to do what I can do to push this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. Well, thank you to everybody for joining us tonight. I thank my Board for their support. Thank you, Teri, for being sworn in again. Just kidding. And just the, here's just onward and upward to hopefully a successful summer and planning for the fall, so. Thank you all. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Motion carried. Thank you all.